Five, plus an alternate. But we expected all five here tonight, and there's only four of us.
Right, that's still just a general majority, not a consensus.
You need three for approval.
Yeah, okay. I went to one in Madison, it was three, and they all had two.
That's correct.
That's right.
Yeah, that was a little touchy.
Yeah.
We say, and we left out.
Okay. The purpose of this hearing tonight is to allow anyone concerned with the case to present evidence, and while this evidence may be in the form of an opinion rather than an established fact, it should support the grounds which this board must consider when making a determination. Tonight's application involves a variance. Let's see. Let me see, concerning Article 12.5.3 of Section 12 of the zoning ordinance. Postings were placed in the Granite State News, in the town office, Center Tuckton Borough Post Office, Melbourne Village Post Office, Selectman's Office, Planning Board, Code Officer, and then certified mail was sent to the town of Tuckton Borough. Francis and Ellen Lasse, or Lace?
Lasse.
Lasse, thank you. And Bert Corriere. No variance shall be granted unless all of the following conditions are met. Number one, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Number three, substantial justice is done. Number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. And five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. And unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property, that distinguish it from other properties in the area. One, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance and specific application of that provision to the property. And two, the proposed use is a reasonable one. And if that criteria is not established, then an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. We'll conduct the hearing as follows. There'll be a presentation by the petitioner of the case, testimony by those in favor, testimony by those opposed, a rebuttal by the petitioner, rebuttal by the opposition. Each person who appears shall state his name and address and indicate whether he is a party to the case or an agent or counsel of a party to the case. And lastly, did we receive any emails, letters, communication from public abutters? Okay? Mike, the floor is yours. What would you like? And for the board, there are two applications here, but they both concern the same property. Is that correct?
Abutting properties.
Abutting properties.
Owned by the same person.
Owned by the same. And this one septic system, or two septic systems, they both fail.
Okay.
Unless the board objects, I think we can hold both, or the hearing tonight can cover both at once. I see no reason, since there are abutting properties and the subject's the same issue.
I think he can present it as one, but I think when you vote, you should vote separately.
Correct, I'm sorry. That's correct. We will vote separately because there are two applications. I saw no problem, Jack and I talked it over earlier, of just letting Mike and anybody else talk it over as one. Mike, please go ahead, thank you.
The building's been there for 35 or so years. It had a cesspool out back, and it's been bubbling here for the last, what, the end of the season here? So I called Dave up to do a design for it. We had options, we could do one system for both houses, or do one system for each house. And Steve suggested we do two separate systems, which we did. And unfortunately, the lot's, one lot's very small, so it's kind of a tight situation there. We don't have a lot of options where we can go with it. Definitely can't pull it back, because it's all wetlands out back. But the designs that Dave felt were the most feasible for the properties.
It was creative estate used it as a drainage way when they built 109. So they pretty much created a wetland behind it. It doesn't look like it really drains to light much.
And you've already received state approval on these?
We have received state approval on the design, and we received state approval today of operator. And by the way, for the record, I am Michael Phelps, the owner. This is Dave Cluff, the designer.
In Shakora, Hampshire.
Shakora.
This is the list of the way that the state allowed. The state has the same distance as you have. Fifty for the tank, seventy-five for the field.
Okay.
And they allow reduction of that. Issue with areas that, you know, where we can't reach it anymore. So on this particular system, which is the house that's going to be added onto there, we had to get away with the tank, because one might say, well, why did you put the tank out here? We've got a setback to the lake on this side that will come over here. So we've got a 75-foot setback to the lake. The property, because it'll just wet, has a seasonal high water table, probably somewhere in 15 to 18 inches. And because of that, further you go from the house to pitch it, the deeper in the ground you go with the tank, and you come into a buoyancy situation where you have to worry about the tank actually floating. So what we did with it is, in part of the variance, we found tanks that are a little unique that Foss is making now.
Shallow tanks.
They're shallow, but they're monolithic tank without the, most of them have the middle seal. This one, the seal's only six inches down from the top. So the bottom path of the tank, which is painted, which is more waterproof. It's a better situation around. Cluff's a heavier tank, holds it down, keeps the water. Because a lot of times in those tanks that are put together with two pieces, you have a problem with leakage around the middle.
Typically sealed and grounded in a situation.
Sealed and grounded, we did this, yeah, it was on the plan. It was part of the requirement on the plan to seal and grow, seal tank. And when we talk about the failure of these, the failure on these systems, it's by design, it's actually by definition. What's out there now are cesspools behind the buildings. Probably on one of them, the second one here, probably in the wetland. Because it's always constructed in the wetlands. This, behind this building, the cesspool.
Have you seen these, Brian?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay.
Probably generally, so the cesspools themselves, which was just not a good system. They're just in the water table. Makes them fail by definition according to state. So what happened in the situation is, we went before, because there was some question about permits for shoreline. This one was done as a failed system with no expansion or of loading or building. So that was allowed to be exempt from the shoreline permit. But Michael, on the second one, wants to put a porch on this one. So we had to go, and we do have a shoreline permit for that, because it was an expansion of the dwelling. If you expand the footprint, you can't fall into the failed system. So there'd been some question about that from Jack, on he thought we had to have a shoreline permit on this one. But you're done by the state saying that it's exempt, and we've already settled that with the state because of that. So there's an issue. They're completely on top of that. So the one shoreline permit we got was issued on the second lot.
Do you need Wetlands Bureau approval?
That's the shoreline. We're wetlands, shoreline, same agency. But under this, they have a shoreline instead of wetlands. There's no wetlands, because we did not impact any wetlands. We're only reducing a buffer that's required from the tank. But we didn't, there was no impact to this wetlands. We didn't, no construction anywhere in any wet area.
Okay.
The construction's all out of the wet in the upland source. So there's no wetland requirement. There wouldn't be any reason for them to do it up there, it was just, they wanted to fix it up front. This was every, the systems were pumped. Had to pump this one as far away as we could. But we also had a restriction from the lake, plus there's a water line coming down through the community water system from the pollution that occurred off the street. It was named IPAC Impact.
PAC 2000.
So in that situation, we've got a, what is it? He's not, he's not, a waiver of sorts. Because he's the last person on it. So Michael and Mr. Lasse agreed that because of the, quote, "possible impact", because of the location of the septic system adjacent to a water line. But the water lines are sleeved, or we call it the sleeving, and within 25 feet of the system, and he signed off on it, because they're the last people on the system.
Sure, yeah.
So any pollution that occurs on this end of the system is going to be their problem. And we didn't want to get too close to them and have any effect upwind or up slope from it, because we don't, we can't deal with worms or water system upwind. So we stayed in our own area. Mr. Lasse's down here, the last one there. So there were some of the reasons why, quote, we're asking for the variances. And you're right about the two different. You need to do it separately, because the waivers are different on both lot. You're right about that, because it's, one's got a septic tank warning, the other one's got a septic and an EDA waiver. So it is a separate.
Any questions?
No. Pretty clear, I mean.
Alicia, do you have any comments? Mr. Lasse, do you have any comments?
I have no objection, no comments.
No objection, so you support this application?
Except for the big mound in front of my house. Except for the big mound.
That's in your view, not mine.
Here we go. I have no further questions. Failed septic systems are pretty direct.
I guess it's time for me to say, probably should have been here before. Missed it a little bit, and we ended up being, Jack caught it on the second go-around. And I think the difference is, in my mind, when I sent it to the town for prior approval, things like that would be picked up. But I understand in this town, Jack's position isn't, so he's not really, how do you say?
He's not.
Instructed to.
He's not instructed to approve the systems. It only, the reason he requires a copy of this is they used to send him the little ones, and you couldn't read them. So the town required you to send a full copy, so the town has a copy in the file.
But it's not, but it's not a full-blown review. The town standards and everything else too, which probably have to be taken up somewhere else and then say, okay, this is going to be the standard. So I'm thinking, okay, town's good. And then when he said the second one, I'm going, oh, yeah, you're right. Because what we did is, we changed it a little bit, so we sent an as-built in. He said, hey, you need waiver on that for the town. And then it came up, and then we started, and we said, yeah, we do. So this is where, that's how we got where we are, which wasn't easy enough for us to do ahead of time, but.
No, failed septic systems are typically not fighting issues. I mean, it's in everybody's interest to see the septic system replaced in a speedy fashion, so. But we'll talk to Jack, I'll talk to Jack later, and we'll also talk amongst ourselves about going to the selectmen, about getting all of our rules more in line with the state. Are there any objections? Max?
No opinion, but it sounds like a good idea.
I didn't think, I thought you were here, I'll ask.
There is an opinion.
There is, and you're in the. Okay, no, that's fine. Nobody objecting?
As long as I'm not damning.
I will go ahead, and any further discussion amongst ourselves? Okay, then we'll just go down the five lists of four variances, and we'll talk it over. And then in the end, we'll go ahead, we'll vote, and we will vote on each application separately. No variance shall be granted unless all of the following conditions are met. Number one, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. I don't see any way that can fix a septic system, you're in line with public interest. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. I believe it is here. They've made good first effort to go ahead, and even if they jumped the gun a little bit, so what? Number three, substantial justice is done. And yes, we all want the failed septic system replaced in a very timely manner. Number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. I say that's an obvious one. Nobody wants sewage to be on their property, and the only man effect is approving of it. Number five, literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. And unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the public purpose of the zoning provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. And number two, the proposed use is a reasonable one. I think the size of the property and the immediate wetlands right behind it are good enough for hardship. And I do think the proposed use is a very reasonable one, replacing cesspools with a formal septic system. Agree with that? Is there a motion to approve? Well, we'll approve the first one, which should be Case 491. Is there a motion to approve, Case 491?
I'll make a motion.
Seconded? Seconded, all in favor of approval, say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it, and for Application 492, which involves the same type of issue right next to it, all move to approve. Seconded, all in favor, say aye. And aye, all opposed? Ayes have it. Mike, thank you for coming in, thank you both, all three. You have your variance.
Question. Do I need a variance to put that porch on? Is there anything in the town that says I need a variance? Because the state approved it to the Wetlands Bureau.
If you meet setbacks, you meet setbacks.
Yeah.
Probably setbacks to the structure, yes. I don't think there was one to the wet.
So you meet, you meet boundary setbacks, then you don't need a variance.
Okay, yeah.
You'd have to meet your front setback, which I don't.
Yeah, I got plenty of room in front.
Okay.
Jack, I'll let you know.
Watch your back. You're happy to talk to you.
Sure.
Yeah, I won't defy you.
Do you want the operational approval sent out?
Sure.
Sure. Please, we just got the septic operational.
Okay. This is 606. And 523.
I know, I did one to my last one. Want to call it on?
No.
Do I get a couple of them? They didn't send me, I guess they didn't have my email address. They didn't send me.
They don't do by email, they didn't send you paper copies. You get paper copies.
Oh, I'll get one in the mail eventually?
I did put email on there, because I don't like them being taken.
Yeah. Was this going to be this way or that way?
I don't know. That's, yeah, that's. I think you can answer on it. Want those? He does.
Yes. These are the most recent.
Thank you for coming out.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I haven't seen it from you, or?
It's waiting home.
Yeah, I'll stick it in the mail tomorrow, you can come in and pick it up tomorrow.
Okay, I got a question for you tomorrow anyway.
Oh, okay.
Not about this. Great. Thank you, Leila, Brandon, for coming.
You do need to do the minutes, they don't run.
I agree with you, it'd be up here with.
Oh, you can put those right in the. So October 31st, the minutes, which was Grady, they don't call it Grady. Grady Village Trust.
Not one, I remember getting them in the mail, and objecting to it more. But I didn't add anything either.
Right. Nobody, everybody was.
Well, that's the Jim Ryan's.
The one Jim Ryan presented, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept that minute says sent out.
I'll second. All in favor?
I also have, oh, I copied this out of, I think it's about forums, just in that way. Read it on the board.
Jackie, you want to talk over? I mean, I already mentioned syncing up the zoning rules.
Yeah, I'll talk to Jack tomorrow, and just see what he says. Because from what this guy said, I didn't really understand what he was meant in comparison to the ordinance and the state.
Well, I know that, as you mentioned, the planning board normally does that.
Right.
And I'd like them to continue that. I don't want to be out of sync with the state guidelines or the state issues.
But I'm not sure, were you, did you understand, Tom, like, two different things?
Yeah, state setbacks can be a little different than town.
Right. But in the past, we tried to keep them in sync, so people didn't have to keep coming. But he sort of implied that it was different tonight. I didn't get what he meant.
It would seem to me that if the state had one, the town could make it more restrictive than they couldn't make it less restrictive.
Right. But usually, in the past, the town has kept it the same as the state, so that you didn't get into this conflict.
Yeah, well, the state, the septic, the property lines is 10 feet.
But it's like he said, you know, Jack, it's not Jack's job to review it, it's just to have it. So I think a lot of towns, the code officer reviews it first.
It's not a bad idea.
Yeah, that would be something that the planning board would have to put in their ordinance.
My opinion anyways. And then the last thing I wanted to talk over was the Zimmerman letter that was sent out, and I'm assuming everybody had copies of it. I sent by email, and then you've gone through it. And the upshot was Zimmerman wants 22,500 from the town for effort that he put forward. I'll go ahead and I'll go through the, since we've all read it. The first paragraph, I thought, was a lot of opinion, when he talks about his design was far superior. He does talk about how his presentation was designed, done by a professional site engineer, proper drainage, all water on site, aesthetically appealing from the street. I would tell him that none of that was required for a zoning board. I mean, zoning board need its plot planned, and that can actually be sketched.
Right. That's all voluntary engineering.
So I think why he did it was because he, you know, I haven't talked to him, but certainly his engineer. Were you on the board then? I mean, you were.
Yeah, that was my first, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you had a, you had a good one, a special exception. I mean, he mentioned to me a couple of times how shocked he was, or very surprised that there was that much pushback from the town. Because when he went in front of Wolfboro, there was him and the Wolfboro, zoning board and him, and the zoning, and then the planning board, and that nobody had any complaints.
For that one that he did downtown?
Yeah.
Little difference between locations.
Well, I agree. And I told him, this is, A, we're a different town, B, this is a residential area, and you were, you were not necessarily, you were in a commercial zone or an area that was zoned much more commercial than where you're trying to govern it now.
Right, and apparently the residents in that neighborhood were not concerned as concerned as the ones in this neighborhood.
And then I did, he does talk about, this is Zimmerman again, that, why we denied the application, that it would change the character of the neighborhood. And the main reason, as I recall, and we talked this over with his engineer, is he wouldn't put in a gate. I mean, that's what it really boiled down to. I mean, I don't have the number of.
It was, yeah, the 24/7.
Yes, the unrestricted access to a commercial activity, where if you put in a gate, that would satisfy certainly the board's concern. And.
Didn't want Pandora's box opened up?
I don't know what the reasons were.
Private business.
We did call out, or suspended the meeting after the first two hours, because the engineer could not answer some of the board questions and some of the people's questions in the crowd. So we gave him time to go back to Zimmerman, because although he didn't have to show, in fact, he did not show for any of these meetings. I thought it was wise to at least give his agent a chance to go talk to him, get answers. They did rearrange the plan a little bit for the second meeting. I think they changed the orientation of the building.
And they reduced the number of days.
They reduced a few number. No gate. It was denied. And then the third time they came.
No substantial changes.
There were no, that's correct. Still no gate. A lot more computer-generated images showing much more berm plantings. But I think as we described, that's a planning board issue. The zoning board is use board. Can you use the property the way you want to, or not? Yes or no? So it doesn't matter to us. We can place restrictions on hours of operation, and we can try to do this or that, but for the most part, the planning board will decide what they want for berm, for landscape. He does go on in the third paragraph and say that he had a modified application addressing all the concerns. And I would tell him right up that, no, you did not address the one key concern for which you were denied. You would not have access in any sort of controlled fashion. It would have been open 24/7, 365. And then I have a far inferior plan that was approved, Hunter's, which I don't think it was. Unreasonable mistake of approval in a far inferior plan. The rest were opinions. He does talk later on about the application that Hunter presented had glaring errors, but he doesn't call them out. And ultimately, obviously, he called for all of us to be fired and replaced by competent people. And then he wants 22,500.
He doesn't know what a board adjustment does, I guess.
Well, I'm surprised, because he's enough of a developer that he should.
Yeah, right. He's just trying to.
He doesn't itemize the bill, but again, I'm assuming most of that is for the engineering effort and the time. And none of that was required for what the zoning board did.
Right.
So I don't think the town owes them a nickel.
No, they don't, they won't.
And in any event, he did have 30 days to appeal, and it's been over six months now? More, nine months, it's not been a year, but more than a while it's been. The four pictures that he included, I note that three of them that he enclosed, three of them are actually computer-generated images of what his application would have been. Well, one is an aerial photo of the site currently under construction. And to me, there's no reason that Hunter's site won't end up looking like what has Zimmerman proposed. And similarly, there's no way that we could know that Zimmerman's would actually have ended up looking the way he said it would. I mean, including computer-generated images versus an aerial photo under construction is a mismatch.
No, the road's.
Doesn't have a, obviously, permit is not finished yet, so.
I would go in front of the selectmen and tell them then that, in my opinion, we don't owe them anything. And to say, look, we're sorry that it didn't work out for you. But I also noted in my notes, when I went through them, that the Hunter plan, when it came time to anybody to object to him, I remember nothing but silence. Steve, I don't know what he did.
He wouldn't talk to all of you.
He had a number of people spoke up in favor of his.
Including Guy Pike and one of the others, who actually came out against Zimmerman. And I remember commenting to everybody, even after I prompted them, that this is somewhat shocking that those of you who so strongly objected before, there's not a single word being spoken against us. And he satisfied the zoning board's concern about the gate. That's why he was approved.
It has been over a year.
Since he came last, yeah.
Yes, he, the first meeting was in October, and the second one was in.
That was Zimmerman's.
Right, and the second one was in November.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. But Steve's has been since then.
Right.
Yes.
No, I would just tell the selectmen that I don't think we owe them. No, I would just tell the selectmen that I don't think we owe him anything, and that, I don't know what kind of letter, if anything. I thought they may have sent something out, I was not clear about it.
I don't think there's anything to say.
No, there was nothing.
Okay, but he didn't table it, he just said, we'll deal with it, or did not do?
No, no, they felt that it wasn't anything that needed to be dealt with. Put it in the circular file, I believe, is what I was told.
Okay, I will just show up at the selectmen's meeting, as I promised, on the fourth, and.
See if they bring it up.
See if it's brought up, and, but.
I think he's just desperate.
Well, I want to make sure, I mean, because he did submit an application, and he submitted a letter that does threaten a lawsuit if he's not paid, we should at least respond. Well, we should have responded to his letter in some way.
Sometimes when you respond to something, you're giving it more credence than it deserves.
If I, if I just go in front of the selectmen and tell them that we've met as a board and we see no merit to his demands?
You might, you might give him the reasoning that.
Oh, I would, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Would that satisfy the board then? Okay, thank you much then, and Jack, do you thank you?
Oh, you're welcome.
I will report back to the board anything that transpires on the board December. Do what I'm hearing.
Stay tuned.
Anyway, I just remember being shocked that the people who opposed either stayed silent even after being prompted or supported.
Well, because they know Steve, they know he's going to be respectful.
Well, I imagine he must.
He lives in this town, too.
Yeah.
Well, well.
Even though Zimmerman lives in this town.
Yeah. Well, it still, it still, to me, was shocking because it was a four-hour meeting in total. Two hours and then two hours on another, two weeks later.
Steve's design was far less impacting from the neighbor's perspective.
None of the neighbors objected.
Are the buildings farther away from the?
They're farther from the road.
Yeah, they are.
The hole's bigger, do.
Yeah.
I think it was so far.
So far, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was eighty-one feet further back.
Well, I know people are upset by the substantial differences between his and Zimmerman's.
Well, I'm sure you'll remember, I was against Zimmerman's, but he has, in my opinion, when she's owned my opinion, he didn't have to go spend that money.
No, no, you're right, he did not, and I mentioned, no.
I don't see what any.
Plot plan, an African sketch would actually work for the zoning board, because all we do is, can you use your property the way you want?
Right.
What is the use? Tell us, you know, in a small town and setting too.
You do a lot better when you show up for your own applications typically too.
Even when you hire an agent, it's worth showing up yourself, because there's nothing like the man himself standing up and saying, this is what I'll do, or this is what I won't do, and here's why.
Or approaching me about ours.
Otherwise, you're offended, you know, you're so speed.
Now, answer your, yeah, yeah, okay. Tom, thank you. Oh, yeah, you're welcome.